Good evening. It's 7:05. We'll call the meeting to order. All members are present. We'll begin with transmitting of Treasury Warrants 42, 42A, 43, and 43A.
Motion so moved.
I got it. Made in second. Is anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous. We move to the approval of the minutes of April 12, 2010. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved as submitted.
I'll second.
Made in second. Is anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous. Our first appointment, which is scheduled for 7 o'clock, is with Joseph Preziosso, TLF Inc., doing business as K&amp;A Coens, and it's regarding a request to obtain a common visual license for property located at 211 Main Street. Mr. Preziosso. Good evening.
Good evening.
Am I pronouncing the name right?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
The board knows a little bit about your application from the material submitted. Maybe you can tell whoever might be watching about what you're looking to do, and we'll see if there's any questions.
Well, I'm looking to do a second venture here in town. My first venture is Kendra and Anthony's Handcrafted Pizza, as we all know, and located at 251 Main Street. I'm looking to open up a second location called K&amp;A Coens, doing exclusively ice cream at 211 Main Street, which is still within SAD, Wilmington Crossing Plaza. Serving soft-serve ice cream, hot-serve ice cream, and all the other novelties and treats that we all know and love and all of our family members enjoy.
Okay. Any recommendations from the administration?
Mr. Chairman, we have recommendations from Inspector Billings, who has reviewed the application for the property and has no outstanding zoning issues, and we have a recommendation from the Health Director, who indicates that she recommends approval of the common visual license, subject to meeting all the requirements of the Board of Health. So, and I know Mr. Preziosso is aware of that. He's not had any final inspections yet, although they've seen the floor plans and all, but there's been no final inspection from the Board of Health. So if it's the will of the Board to grant approval of the common visuals, I would request that they do so, subject to meeting all the conditions of the Board of Health.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board?
I've got a general question, Mike, just not specific to the application. I'm curious, are you, is the intent to be open year-round, 12 months, selling the ice cream product?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay.
That is the intent.
Okay. Good.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Any else from the board or a motion?
I would move that we approve the license to K&amp;A Coens, subject to the Board of Health conditions that the manager discussed.
I'll second.
Made in second. Anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you very much. I'll see y'all soon.
Our next appointment, scheduled for 7:10, is with Chief Michael Begonas, the Wilmington Police Department, and it's regarding a recognition of Robert Beals on the occasion of his retirement as Lieutenant and Commanding Officer of the Wilmington Auxiliary Police. If the Chief and Mr. Beals have a seat at the front.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you both. Before us this evening, ladies and gentlemen, is an opportunity to recognize a member of the community who's served in a number of different capacities in the Auxiliary Police Department or Force, including Patrolman, Administrative Sergeant, Lieutenant, and Commanding Officer of the Wilmington Auxiliary Police. And I guess before my time, he was also considered a member of the Special, or Special Police Officer, be the correct terminology. Before we have the opportunity to recognize Mr. Beals, I just wondered if perhaps first you could tell us a little bit more about the Auxiliary Police, what they do, and then if you and/or Mr. Beals have anyone that you'd like to recognize that's in attendance or otherwise, we'd be happy to give you that opportunity as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks to the board for recognizing Bob's volunteer work for the many, many years since the '70s with the Wilmington Police Department. He began as a special, as you said, that Special Police Officers Corps was dissolved back in the '70s, and then Chief Stewart began the Auxiliary Police Department, and Bob has been a member of that through an integral part. He was the Administrative Sergeant for many years, moving up to Lieutenant and taking over the Auxiliary Unit for probably the past 10 years or so.
10 years, yeah.
10 years. He's done a remarkable job in understanding that it is volunteer work. It's certainly something to be applauded. He, the Auxiliary Wilmington Police Department is an integral part of what we do in the Police Department on a daily basis. But where they come in really handy for us is for special events, the Fourth of July festivities, Memorial Day events, anytime there's a parade or there is a road race, these folks come out and they volunteer their time, and they do a really remarkable job. And quite frankly, we probably couldn't do what we do as a police department without them, without their volunteerism. So, that being said, you know, Bob has run the unit for the past 10 years. He's taken them to a very high level of training. A lot of involvement in what we do in the Police Department and our training, they mirror. So, you know, we go to the range, they go to the range. We take legal classes, we take CPR classes, first responder classes, they do all that. And at great expense to themselves, too, because it's all volunteerism. They pay for their own uniforms, they pay for their own equipment, and one of the amazing things about them is that as a unit, they never say no. Anytime we call, they always get yes. And I know that it's a great sacrifice to them and their families that they do that. We believe strongly in the Auxiliary Police Department. It's gone through some changes recently. We anticipate putting, you know, a stepped-up effort in trying to increase the numbers. Right now, we're down to around 12. At one point in time, we were roughly about 30.
30, yeah.
A lot of changes for the unit and for the Police Department over the past several years. You know, I was thinking earlier that Bob's worked for five different chiefs, so it just shows his longevity, and he's gotten along famously with every last one of them, which is, you know, is a tall order in and of itself with a different personality. So, that's a testament to Bob's ability to just bridge that gap, to communicate, and to step up no matter what. And I think he does that by making them all happy, because he's never said no. So, that being said, Bob has many family members and friends here. I'd like to start off by introducing his wife, Anita. If she'd raise her hand, so we can see her, she's tucked in the back there. Certainly, she's made a lot of sacrifices, because Bob, when he's been out doing his school patrols and, you know, sacrificing and donating his time in the community, obviously he's not at home. So, you know, this is their burden and their volunteerism as well, in sacrificing Bob's time to us. Bob's daughter Nancy is here. Nancy actually works as a dispatcher at the Police Department. Was that just a little wave back there? I barely see everybody. He also, tonight in attendance is his daughter Susan and her husband Stephen Murphy over in the back there. Steve, can we see the Red Sox championship ring, please? Proudly won. His daughter Lauren and her husband Scott Spencer. And Robert and Mary Spencer. They didn't make it? Okay. And also wanted to recognize a couple of Bob's grandchildren, his grandson Chris Jackson, granddaughter Summer Beals, Tyler Beals, Liliana Beals, and Delaney Beals. Are they here as well?
Well, Delaney's wailing out in the hallway. The others are...
And also, you know, as a testament to Bob and the time he spent in the Auxiliary and the time he's worked, we have a lot of Auxiliary members in attendance as well, so I'd like to recognize a couple of them at this time. Also Sergeant Thompson. There he is. I think you've been around just about as long.
There he is.
Yeah, there you go. Sergeant Rooney. Sergeant D'Antonio. Sergeant Naughtner. Mr. Brownell.
Plummer.
And, yes, and our Administrative Sergeant right now handles a lot of paperwork for filling a lot of the slots that we do, Ralph Plummer. And I know that's a lot of volunteer time, keeping that in order as well. So, Santa Ramsey is in the back. Did anybody else pop Benches in the front? Also, I'd like to recognize Lieutenant Scott Sensibar. Lieutenant Scott Sensibar is the liaison for the Auxiliary to the Police Department, and I think, you know, Scott is our training supervisor, has worked very closely with them, and, you know, I get the briefings when they come back from the range, or they do their different trainings, and Scott is just, you know, he just champions everything they do and their efforts constantly. So Scott has been a big advocate for the Auxiliary, and we want to thank Scott for that as well. And of course, I couldn't pretty much get anything done if I didn't recognize Deputy Chief, he's, Bob Richter is my right-hand man, and to tell you the truth, probably one of my best friends, because he keeps me out of a lot of grief. So, that being said, you know, the Auxiliary Police Department is a, it's an integral part of the Wilmington Police Department. It's that important that, you know, we call them when we run out of personnel, and they're the folks that show up every time, in the rain, in the cold, it doesn't matter. They're out there checking the schools and the town buildings on a regular basis. They do a real super job, and for that, Bob, you know, I appreciate it personally.
Thank you.
As the Police Chief, to know that I can make that phone call and that someone's going to be there. Appreciate it.
Very good. Well, Mr. Beal, certainly before, we do have a presentation and want to give you an opportunity beforehand to say a couple of words, if you'd like to, or if you...
Yeah, sure. I'd like to thank Town Manager, the Board of Selectmen. I'm never at a loss for words, as most of these guys know. I'd like to thank certainly the Chief and Lieutenant Sensibar and Deputy Richter. Scott Sensibar has helped the Auxiliary out a lot, gets us a lot of training. Certainly, my wife of 46 years, she let me out of the house for 34 years, but she always knew where I was. Night and day, she knew where I was. And of course, my four kids and my five grandchildren are here, and I'd like to thank them also. And the members of the Auxiliary Police show up tonight. They're a big help to me, and I'm sure they'll still be there to volunteer when they need it.
Very good. Well, thank you again, and without anything further, I do want to invite you up to the front of the room to present you with a resolution from the Board of Selectmen. I'd just like to read it, viewing for the audience. It says, "Whereas Robert C. Beals has served the citizens of the town of Wilmington with dedication and distinction as a member of the Wilmington Police Department, and whereas his service has included work as a Special Police Officer and as a Patrolman, Administrative Sergeant for the last 10 years, as Lieutenant and Commanding Officer of the Wilmington Auxiliary Police, and whereas he has willingly volunteered his time to protect the citizens and property of the town of Wilmington, and whereas his leadership as Commanding Officer helps, helped to ensure the success of countless town programs and events, and whereas throughout his career, he has consistently exemplified professionalism and an unwavering commitment to community. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Wilmington officially recognizes the retirement of Robert C. Beals as Lieutenant and Commanding Officer of the Auxiliary Police of the town of Wilmington Police Department, and expresses its congratulations and gratitude for past service and its sincerest best wishes for health, happiness, and good fortune in the days ahead, and is given this 26th day of April, 2010 by the Wilmington Board of Selectmen."
Thank you very much.
And I just want to make sure that before we let folks leave, that we give the board an opportunity to share any comments that we might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not only is it an honor and a privilege to recognize Bob Beals, I'm a former member of the Wilmington Auxiliary Police, and I used to serve under Bob as he was the Command Officer with Eddie Williams, and he was always a stand-up guy, classy individual, and he had a, you know, wonderful wife, and I know a couple times going over to your house during patrol. But as the Chief said, the Auxiliary Police really are the eyes and ears of this community. They let the Police Department knows what's happening in the community, and the Chief is right. Lot of volunteerism. They pay for their own uniforms, they volunteer a lot of time, they work the events, and obviously, once in a while, they do get a paid detail, and they deserve it. I think it's an outstanding organization. I was very proud to be in it, and I, Bob, you always, I learned a lot from you, because, you know, he took everything serious, and they did, they do a great job. Members on the Auxiliary Police gone on to be Police Officers, they've gone on to be attorneys, and they even opened up a restaurant, you know, so, you know. And if the FinCom has their way with the meals tax, I might be wanting to apply for a job back on the Auxiliary Police and get a detail here and there. And I don't know if the uniform fits anymore, but we'll see what happens. But once again, Bob, you're an outstanding family, and I wish all the best to you, and it was a privilege working under you, and you are a classy guy, Bob.
Thank you, Mike.
Anything else from the board?
I just concur what everybody said, and 34 years on the force, married 46 years, you were always afraid of commitment, because that was the... Congratulations.
Thank you.
I don't, I think it's all been summed up. I think, you know, he said it all, and again, it's citizens like you and the staff that you put together that makes Wilmington so special, and I think the town can see it, and as Mr. McCoy said, that it's great citizenship and great leadership throughout, you know, your years. And one thing I'd like to say, I would have liked to have served under you, but I couldn't meet the height limit of you.
town meeting.
Thanks, Ray.
Mr. Chairman, as you indicate, it's time to assign the motions.
Well, being last to speak always makes it difficult to come up with something new
We've been through these articles on a number of occasions, but if there's any discussion,
and unique to say, except to say, thank you very much for your years of service.
Thank you.
I hope people watching are inspired by the story that we've heard about your volunteerism
just stop me. If anybody needs explanation, I'll try to go through them quickly as they
through the years, and will step up themselves. So, again, thank you, and don't disappear. I hope we can still count on you for advice
are included in the yellow warrant booklet, excuse me.
and counsel in the years ahead. Good luck to you.
Thank you again, as you told me, Ted.
The meeting, as you know, is next Saturday, which is May 1, at the Larry Cushing Gymnasium
Thank you.
Thank you.
at Wilmington High School on Church Street. The meeting begins at 10:30 and requires a quorum of 150 voters to start, so we encourage people to come down to the town meeting and let your voices be heard. Article 1, following the disposition of the reading of the entire warrant, which will be a motion offered by Chairman Newhouse, as is tradition, the moderator will speak to Article 1, which was last Saturday's town election, and introduce those individuals who will serve the town of Wilmington in elected office over the next several years. Article 2 is a standard article to hear reports of committees and their on, and we will move to take no action on that, because there are no reports scheduled to come back to the town meeting from any prior town meeting. Article 3 will be also a motion there to not adopt the article, because it seeks to raise and appropriate any money for purposes of paying unpaid bills of prior years. There are no unpaid bills of prior years. And again, these are just standard articles. Mr. Chairman, traditionally, we would assign the motions a number of ways, typically with the chairman first, and unless anybody objects, we'll go down to Selectmen McCoy, and then just come right down in line to Selectmen Semaglia, and Selectmen Lepore, and Selectmen Shampoo, and then go again, if that's okay. Article 4 would be offered by Chairman Newhouse, and would authorize the Treasurer Collector with the approval of the board to enter into banking agreements with the banks of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Again, it's a standard article. Article 5 is the budget article, which would be offered by the Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. Dougherty, and there'll be several amendments to those articles, all of which are normally brought forward, which enable the town to take certain funds from available funds, particularly through the Water Department, to pay for their share of various, of various accounts. And you would then turn, I guess, to page 12, where we would continue with the motions.
Quick question on the budget.
Yes.
During the Finance Committee hearings, I know it was over an extended period of time, and I certainly wasn't at all of them, have there been any motions that have been discussed or offered about amending the manner in which we do business on the budget or any line items like that?
No, there were not.
All right. Thank you.
Article 6 is the capital equipment article, and it will be done through four different motions. Again, and I'm not trying to be presumptuous here, but Selectmen McCoy would offer the first motion, which would be for the purchase of full replacement police cruisers. The total amount for that purchase would be $115,760. The next motion under Article 6 would be offered by Selectmen Semaglia for the purchase of a replacement fire chief's vehicle, with the cost being $36,700. The next article would be offered by Selectmen Lepore for the purchase of a replacement van truck for the Public Buildings Department. The expected appropriation for that would be $46,600. And then would be Department of Public Works, the purchase of a three-quarter ton pickup truck and a replacement sidewalk plow for the Highway Division. The motion would be offered by Selectmen Shampoo. The total is $140,600, which breaks down as $110,500 for the sidewalk plow and $30,100 for the pickup truck. Article 7 would be offered by Chairman Newhouse, and would be to appropriate $44,000 for the purchase of a new mobile and portable radios to enable the conversion of the communication system for the Fire Department. Article 8 would be offered by Selectmen McCoy, and it would be to raise $53,000. First of that, $35,000 to pay for approximately the replacement of 3,400 square feet of roof area at the Hundred and Tavern, and $18,000 for the replacement of 2,000 square feet of roof area at the Old South School, which is on Chestnut Street. Again, the total would be $53,000 for those roof repairs, the two historical buildings. Article 9 would be offered by Selectmen Semaglia to appropriate $125,000 to assist us in addressing various needed repairs and improvements at municipal and school facilities. It would allow us to address energy efficiencies, plant operations, mechanical systems, structural issues, code compliance, would enable the town to have money available when it's needed in a hurry for the nearly three-quarters of a million square feet of municipal facilities. And it would also enable us to be able to more readily apply for grants when they are matching grants. We would be able to use these funds for that purpose. Article 10 is to be offered by the School Committee. I believe it'll be offered by Chairman Peggy Kane, but nonetheless, it would be offered by the School Committee to vote to raise and appropriate funding for the high school feasibility study, which we estimate would totally cost $1,125,000, with approximately half of that amount coming via the state through reimbursement. Again, this is not, this does not require any kind of a debt exclusion or override vote. This would enable the town to determine its best course of action as to whether or not it wishes to take some renovation, repair, or new construction with regard to the high Article 11 is the standard article, where we look at various line items in the current fiscal year and determine whether there are surpluses in those accounts and whether there are deficits in other accounts and move monies. It appears at this point that we are anticipating that there are some, some of both, that we certainly will finish with a balanced budget, and I believe with plenty of money to get us through the, through the year. We will be recommending that we transfer approximately $348,000 out of the $78 million budget. Again, no, no new money, just moving money from one account to another. At this point, we're looking at accounts that have shotfalls that include veterans' assistance, fuel heating, a school choice account, which is a statutory assessment that we have no control of, and a couple of minor accounts that have to do with the snow and ice. We actually finished in the black with snow and ice, but the salt and sand account and miscellaneous account needs to get about $21,000 from the other surplus accounts. We'll also be looking at some insurance accounts as well. We are anticipating significant surpluses in various accounts to handle that, including trash, also the Swain School demolition account, which we had originally estimated to be about $160,000, and it came in at about $122,000. So, it's about $38,000 there. Shoshin Tech, where we had approximately $55,000 in savings, and also the elevator repair that we had to do at the Memorial Library that is just about complete. We expect that there'll be funds there that'll be available for transfer. In addition, we will be looking to move available funds from sewer, the available fund sewer account, into the MWRA sewer assessment account. And this is really a, again, a statutory amount of money. We never know exactly what the assessment is going to be until it comes down through the state, and in this case, last year, it was underestimated, but so wasn't the available funding in sewer, so it essentially becomes a wash. Article 12 would be offered by Selectmen Lepore, and then, I'm going too quickly, stop me. I know you've all heard most of this before. Article 12 would be offered by Selectmen Lepore, and then it would continue the town's senior citizen work opportunities through the Town Senior Citizen Tax Workoff Program. The motion would be to appropriate $15,360. That would enable us to offer these volunteer job opportunities to approximately 24 qualified seniors who could earn up to $640. Article 13 would be offered by Selectmen Shampoo. It would be to appropriate $6,000 in order to observe both Memorial Day and Veterans Day. Article 14 would be offered by Chairman Newhouse, and it's $1,500, 750 each, for the purpose of renewing under state statute the lease of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Clubhouse and the American Legion Clubhouse, which again is another article that is offered each year. Article 15 is another standard article, would be offered by Selectmen McCoy. It would reauthorize two of the town's revolving accounts pursuant to state statute. One is the compost bin account, where we sell compost bins, and the proceeds for that goes back into the revolving account, enable us, enabling the town to buy more compost bins. There would be an authorization for $4,500 there. That's not an appropriation. That is just an authorization that enables you to expend from the dollar amount that's already been made available through the revolving fund, that amount of money. And we also will do the same with our subsurface sewage disposal upgrade system to the amount of $200,000. Again, this is a program originally funded by, by the state as a startup many, many years ago, and we provide loans to homeowners who have problems with septic systems or with the need to connect to sewer, and they pay back those dollars to this program. And again, it's a revolving fund, and this is an authorization for the same. Article 16 would authorize the town to transfer the money that we've received in terms of the MTBE proceeds this year as a result of our success with the products liability litigation settlements, in this case... It would reauthorize two of the town's revolving accounts pursuant to state statute. One is the compost bin account, where we sell compost bins, and the proceeds for that goes back into the revolving account, enable the town to buy more compost bins. There would be an authorization for $4,500 there. That's not an appropriation. That is just an authorization that enables you to expend from the dollar amount that's already been made available through the revolving fund, that amount of money. And we also will do the same with our subsurface sewage disposal upgrade system to the amount of $200,000. Again, this is a program originally funded by the state as a startup many, many years ago, and we provide loans to homeowners who have problems with septic systems, with the need to connect to sewer, and they pay back those dollars to this program. And again, it's a revolving fund, and this is an authorization for the same. Article 16 would authorize the town to transfer the money that we've received in terms of the MTBE proceeds this year as a result of our success with the products liability litigation settlements. In this case, we're talking about $87,600 or so that came in in fiscal year 2010, and we would now officially move that money into the water fund, as was the decision originally by the Board of Selectmen and the Water and Sewer Commission in conjunction with council when we agreed to go into this class action lawsuit. It would mean that the town, since being involved in this lawsuit, has received some $947,000 in the past two years, and there are still some smaller defendants that we are expecting to receive additional dollars in the days ahead. That motion would be offered by the Water and Sewer Commission. And I'm not sure if I mentioned on Article 15 that motion would be offered by Selectman McCoy. In case I missed that.
You did.
Article 16, again, the Water and Sewer Commission. Article 17 would be offered by the Board of Library Trustees, and it is to name the bicentennial room at the Wilmington Memorial Library in honor of James Banda in recognition of his 25 years of devoted service as a member of the Board of Library Trustees, and even beyond that, and further in recognition of his exemplary public service that he's provided to the citizens and the town of Wilmington for probably 50 years. Article 18 would be offered by Selectman Semaglia, who also brought this to the board, asking to designate the bridge at the Lowell Street Crossing over Maple Meadow Brook as a lasting memorial to the men and women of the town of Wilmington who have served in the United States military by naming the bridge the Veterans Memorial Bridge. Article 19 would be offered by Selectman Lepore, and this would be to extend the agreement with Reading Light that was originally signed back in 1990 and needs to be extended in 10-year increments. This would extend it until 2030. It was last extended 10 years ago through to 2020, and now it would go to 2030. And as you know, this enables the town not only to receive in lieu of tax payments from the Reading Light Department, which is amounting to about $700,000 a year now. It also gives the town a voice at the Citizens Advisory Board meetings. We have two of the representatives on that board. There are five total, one from Reading, Lynnfield, and North Reading, and two from Article 20 would be offered by Selectman Shampoo, and it is to amend the bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington to make clear the town's intention in terms of not having any obstruction in any private ways or private travel ways, and giving the teeth now to the town to make sure that no one can park their car in such a way on a private way that would inhibit the response of public safety vehicles. It's really a kind of a housekeeping article, because there have been some issues, and council work with us to make sure that the town has the right authority and that we would be able to provide emergency services to all.
Who would be offering that? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Selectman Shampoo would be offering that. And Article 21 would be offered by Chairman Newhouse, and it really is to correct a Scrivener's error at the last town meeting when we adopted both a comprehensive stormwater management bylaw and an excavation and trench safety bylaw. But in so doing, we numbered them incorrectly. The town numbered them as Articles 48 and 49, and they should have numbered them as Articles 50 and 51. Nothing changes in the bylaw. It's just simply a corrective action to make sure the bylaws are in the right sequence and they're numbered correctly. Mr. Chairman, Articles 22 through 34 are all planning board articles. An extensive discussion of those articles through the public hearing process. If the board is looking for any discussion of that, again, I'd be happy to speak to them, but at this point, none of those would be offered by the Board of Selectmen. And then the remaining articles are all petitioned articles, Articles 35 through 43. And again, we've reviewed these petitioned articles, and the petitioners have all had their opportunity to speak to them. But again, if the board would like to discuss any of those articles or would have any questions, I can at least let them know what I know about them.
Just as a general point on a number of the rezoning articles, which are intended to make a lot of non-conforming lots conforming by zoning down from R-60 to R-20 and R-10 respectively.
Right.
Fielded a couple of questions. I've reiterated that we've, we, meaning the town, through the Planning Department, has looked repeatedly at the lots that are included, and to our knowledge, they were all improved lots, and they're not, they wouldn't create a build-out potential for those improved lots. It's an additional building potential. It makes it easier to do additions, sheds, things like that with respect to setbacks, right?
That's correct. And there were, of all of those lots, there were three that we were concerned about since preparing this, and there will be amendments offered. Or it depended upon town council, we may offer just simply as the main motion to delete the inclusion of those lots. But your description of what we are attempting to do is right on target, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? I think we can proceed to communications.
Mr. Chairman, this is also germane to the town meeting. It's my memorandum that is sent each year to the town clerk relative to the sale of town-owned land at the annual town meeting. I'm advising you that I've reviewed all the parcels of town-owned land that are on the warrant for disposition in order to determine whether a declaration of surplus is appropriate. As you know, by our bylaws, the town manager is responsible to make a determination. And I've made those determinations based in part on the recommendations of the Property Review Board. And just so people know, the Property Review Board is simply an advisory board that I established back in 1991. I came here in 1990, and I just felt it was important to get some input before making a surplus declaration. And there are appropriate departments represented on that particular advisory board. It's really an ad hoc board to me. It has no standing, but it is something that I utilize each year. And I've notified each petitioner of our decisions specifically. Article 35, I've determined that the property is not surplus to the needs of the town. That was property on Cherry Street that was being proposed for sale by a petitioner. If we had sold that particular piece of property, we would be breaking up a full lot that the town owns, and I did not think, in terms of my fiduciary responsibility, that that would make sense for the town to devalue its property. Article 36 is the article that relinquishes a bus turnaround easement. And the bus turnaround easement is, in fact, surplus to our needs. It's no longer needed. It was utilized at one point when the kindergarten bus route needed to go in this particular location. School Department, the Police Department, the Planning Board all recognize that there is no longer a need for this particular turnaround because of the build-out of Marion Street, and therefore, at the cost of the resident, in terms of legal cost, the town will relinquish the easement. It must be done at a town meeting. Article 37 is not town-owned. It's a piece of property that was submitted in error by a petitioner, and the town obviously would not be selling property that it doesn't own, but this has to go forward because it did come to town meeting. And Article 38, I also determined was not surplus to the needs of the town and therefore will not be offered for sale at town meeting. And this was an attempt by the petitioner to purchase six parcels of land in the presidential way in Neighborhood. If there are no questions, I'll continue. I just wanted to discuss with the board the information that we've received now, and the board has seen regarding the fiscal year 2011 local aid proposal by House Ways and Means. What I've tried to do is provide the board with a synopsis of where we are right now in local aid. You can see that we have for you a column that includes the governor's proposal and now the proposal that came from House Ways and Means. The governor's proposal overall was level funding local aid for all communities. Certain communities would receive a little bit more because of foundation budgets in education, including the town of Wilmington. Those were makeup monies where the town had been essentially provided less than it should have been over a period of years, and they've tried to make it up over several years. And then the House Ways and Means budget, which in terms of community statewide, would make a 4% reduction. As you know, the budget estimate that the town made in terms of those major categories of local aid, that's unrestricted general local aid and Chapter 70, education aid, when the town presented its budget back at the end of January, early February, we did so proposing that, or anticipating that there would be a 10% reduction in local aid. So we have a balanced budget based upon a 10% reduction in local aid. We're hoping, obviously, that this, one of these two budget proposals, either the governor or House Ways and Means, is adopted, and if it is adopted, then the town would be very comfortable from a financial point of view going forward into fiscal year 2011. Now, the reason why, you know, there's not a call for cartwheels at this point is because this is still early in the process, still has to go through the Senate, and ultimately back to both branches of the legislature and then to the governor. And then we need to be wary of what could happen during the fiscal year, just as there have been cuts, mid-year cuts in local aid. But if there is just a 4% reduction, and that appears right now to be the best guess, then the town would again be well positioned in the event that there is an additional reduction during the fiscal year. So I think the conservative budgeting that we have done in terms of revenue projection and keeping costs down as low as possible puts us in a pretty decent position at this Unless there are questions. You also have a document that was sent out by Senator Tarr after the House Ways and Means released its budget. And again, he notes that state spending based upon this budget would increase by about 3.2%, but it would require approximately a 4% reduction in local aid. And then I've provided for you a listing of what those numbers look like based upon the Ways and Means budget proposal, and that is available to you.
All right. May I ask why the list ends at Rainham?
I don't know.
Okay.
It should not have. I don't know why it wasn't extended, but the Wilmington numbers are the numbers that are exactly in the spreadsheet.
May I ask you, procedurally, and I know these are hypotheticals, but if the 4% makes it through, and we have the good fortune during the fiscal year of there not being additional cuts necessary, you mentioned that we'll be in a, I guess, in a comfortable position to be able to operate well within our means.
Right.
Does that, where does the money go, procedurally? Is it a free cash account that gets bolstered?
It goes into the general funds.
The general.
Into the free cash reserve, an operating reserve, and it...
After paying budget shortfalls, though.
Right. I mean, there is a, at the end of the year, it depends upon how much money has come in and how much money has gone out. But certainly, one would expect that if local aid comes inward, you know, where it is now with House Ways and Means, that we would have enough of a surplus to boost free cash. And in this case, this would be very helpful to us because we're right now undergoing sort of a mini-review from Standard and Poor's, which they're doing, which they do every couple of years. They're not doing this in conjunction with any borrowing, but as soon as we go out for any major borrowing, which we expect to do in the next six months or so, that, you know, for some of the capital projects that we appropriated for before, this would really help us, I think, in terms of our bond rating and ultimately what the cost of borrowing would be.
Thank you.
I can tell you that when Tewksbury went out, and they went out for 25 years on a major bond authorization for their school, and they're doing that, I think, at four and a quarter percent. I, you know, and that's, so it's a very favorable bond market right now. I'm sure that Wilmington could do as well or better.
And the healthier, the, I hate the word free cash. It's not free, but I guess the healthier that account is, the better, or that has a direct impact on our bond rating and the favorability?
Probably the most important impact is that they look at, that the rating agencies look at, is the town's operating reserves so that they're comfortable that they could meet any obligation that comes down the road, and so that when they sell, they go to sell the bonds into the bond market, they can point to that as the financial stability for the town.
Thank you. I appreciate the expanding on some of that.
Yeah.
If I could just ask a question of the town manager, Mike, in real dollars, that 4%, how much are we talking? If it is minus 4%?
Compared to the 10% that we anticipated cutting, it could be as much as $1,500,000.
Okay.
So, the board has correspondence from the Mass Municipal Association via their legislative alerts regarding municipal relief and state budget bills. The municipal relief bill was being, was scheduled to be taken up today. It was released from House Ways and Means last week, referred to as a municipal relief package. And the MMA is supporting several of the measures, including pension repayment funding schedule extension, a municipal early retirement incentive program, and mutual aid for public safety operations. And then there are a number of different amendments that they speak to as well. The town would certainly not object to any of this legislation going forward, with the understanding that certainly the funding schedule repayment for pension is something that would help, I think, all communities. Public safety, mutual aid is not something that we're not familiar with, it's something we do anyways. And the municipal early retirement incentive program is an optional early retirement program. As you know, when early retirement programs have come before the town in the past, I've recommended against their adoption, and the board has never adopted those early retirement programs. I think as a result, that's assisted us with our pension assessments. But again, we're certainly, I don't think we'd have any objection to any of these things going forward. And this is just a notification that the House will be debating the state budget bill, and that is the bill that we just talked about through House Ways and Means. If anybody wants to make any comments, certainly.
I mean, there's so many different amendments and measures here that... I mean, there's so many different amendments and measures here that the MMA makes recommendations on, and by and large, they're doing what is good for cities and towns across the board. Every little item doesn't necessarily tailor it to Wilmington, so I've always taken the position that our legislators, by and large, know, you know, the bottom line impact to the town. If it's policy-driven, then we ought to speak up, but if it's financial, they figure it out.
Board has a copy of the letter that was sent by the chairman of the Tewksbury Planning Board, David Plunkett, to Frank Tremontozzi, the chief engineer for the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division, regarding the I-93 tri-town interchange project and the draft purpose and need statement. The town of Tewksbury was objecting in this letter to the deletion of the words consistent with community planning efforts within the draft purpose and need statement. The Tewksbury Planning Board noted that the EPA has suggested that the purpose statement be revised to remove reference to community planning efforts because local plans are subject to change at almost any time and contained factors that are not transportation/roadway-related. Mr. Plunkett pointed out, and I think rightly so, that this is something that the towns have been in support of and that all the community planning that has occurred does keep in mind any transportation or roadway factors and impacts. I think from the town's perspective, and certainly as Sluck and Shampoo can comment as well as the, one of the members, one of the two members who are here along with myself on the, on the tri-town task force, that we would have no objection, I think, to the reinstatement of that phrase because we certainly want to be able to make sure that anything that goes on in the I-93 project is consistent with what the towns want, and that's, that's been a, sort of a bellwether since the very beginning.
I was struck only that the EPA had gone to the effort of removing the phrase. To me, the phrase didn't seem particularly to have a ton of content that could, that could infringe or have limitations on, on their efforts. So it was surprising that they went through any effort to remove it at all, and I agree. I would support, I'm in support of Tewksbury's desire to reinstate it.
The board has correspondence from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and the MBT Advisory Board regarding the municipal elections to the Boston Region Metropolitan Planning Organization. As you know, we receive this particular correspondence around this time each year. It is specifically directed to the chief elected official, as they are the person in each community, the chair of the Board of Selectmen, or the mayor of one of the communities in this region, who are allowed to vote for representatives to the Region Metropolitan, the Boston Region Metropolitan Planning Organization. There are two municipal seats, and what you have before you are statements of candidacy for those seats. The election is to be held on May, I'm sorry, it looks like June 2nd, on June 2nd. There is a candidates forum on May 20th, and ballots can either be mailed in, or they can be filed absentee, or they can be done in, in person. The candidates are a selectman from Framingham, Ginger Esti, and Mayor William Scanlon of Beverly, and Mayor Joseph Curtitone of Somerville. They've provided their statements of candidacy, and the chair of the Board of Selectmen will have the authority to, to vote on behalf of the town. So, I don't know. You also have a copy of a letter, an email actually, that was sent by Mayor Curtitone from Somerville, talking about his candidacy and asking for the town's support. The board has in receipt of a letter from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, the FEMA division, which is of course the Federal Emergency Management Agency through its regional office, providing an official reminder that the town of Wilmington has until June 4th to adopt the Federal Emergency Management Agency's approved floodplain management measures that satisfy the feds. As the board knows, the floodplain district language is included in the town warrant, I believe it's Article 22, and the adoption of that particular article would put us in conformity with the FEMA request.
May I ask on that, I'm sorry, Mike, by conforming, what does that make us eligible for? Is it, is it us, the town, eligible for FEMA assistance in case it is need, or residents within the town? Or both?
I think both, but certainly the town becomes eligible. It's something MAPC has put forward for all the towns in the MAPC region.
So in the absence of it, if we took our eye off the ball and this didn't go through, potentially?
There could be, there could be a problem down the, down the road.
Thank you.
We have a memorandum here that I've provided to the board, just notifying you and reminding you that you will have appointments to make at your next meeting, and I've provided to you a list of the incumbents who you may wish to consider, obviously under no obligation to do so, and appointments and reappointments will be considered at the May 10th meeting of the Board of Selectmen, and various positions to be appointed, one for the Board of Appeals, one person for the Board of Registros. There are three positions of two-year terms in the Council for the Arts, also the town council position, and various constables. To that end, you have letters that indicate certain constable candidates would like your support to continue. They include letters from Paul Bruce Jr. of Wilmington, Ronald M. DiGiorgio of Burlington, and John J. Ruhrwein of Wakefield. Mr. Chairman, you have a, a letter that the board received back on April 8th. This was from Christopher J. Swim of North Billrica, who wrote asking for an opportunity to become a constable of, in the town of Wilmington, and he provided some background information, which you have, as well as his letters of recommendation. This would be a new appointment, and it would be scheduled, just as we scheduled the last appointment that you just made, at your last meeting of an individual named Mr. Pepicelli from Burlington. This is a similar situation where we went out and asked for the recommendations of the appropriate department heads. Specifically, the Wilmington Police Department has provided the following recommendation with regard to the request of Mr. Swim. This is from Mr. Begonis, the chief of police. The Wilmington Police Department is unable to provide favorable recommendation of approval to the request by Christopher J. Swim of 198 Shoreline Drive in North Billrica. I don't know if the board wants to vote on the request of Mr. Swim to be a constable, to be appointed a constable. We do have that recommendation from Chief Begonis.
Any questions or comments?
I'm going to...
Needing a minute?
A note for the record, the town clerk did recommend the appointment based upon the material that was provided by Mr. Swim, in terms of that being in order. The police chief then does his own review and background, and he has made his determination to recommend in opposition to the appointment.
Do you need to take action, or Mr. Swim, or?
I think we should, yes. He's in motion.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't hear you, Mike, when you said yes?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I mean, given the input from the chief of police, I'd recommend that we go along with the chief of police and not recommend or disapprove Mr. Swim's appointment request as constable here in the town.
Second.
Okay, made seconded to deny the request of Mr. Swim. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? It's unanimous?
Board has a request, is being asked to consider a request of Sharon George, the town clerk, to appoint an additional election worker for 2010. This particular person is David Landers of 88 Clark Street.
Any questions, comments, or a motion?
I make a motion that we appoint David Landers as the election worker for 2010.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Made seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Board has a letter from Janet Sutulio of the Wilmington Garden Club requesting permission for the Garden Club to use the town common on Saturday, May 8th, to hold their annual plant sale from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in order to assist them in funding the support for many of their projects that the Garden Club is involved with each year.
And no scheduling conflicts, I assume?
No.
You haven't raised. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I would like to move that we authorize, give permission for the Wilmington Garden Club to use the town common on Saturday, May 8th for their annual plant sale.
I'll second.
Made seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, the board is being asked to consider the request of Khalid Hazemeh to obtain a hawk and pedal license to sell ice cream. This would be a renewal of his permit from years past, including last year. Chief Begonis has reviewed it and indicated that there's no evidence to hinder this individual from being granted the permit and licenses requested. Also, we have a, an approval recommendation for a hawk and pedal license from Shelley Newhouse, the health director.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I have a basic question. One thing that I caught, and I'm sure it's appropriate, the certificate of registration in this packet, looks like the vehicle is, belongs to Safu Ahmed, but we're approving the, the application for Khalid Kazemeh, and is that just his, is it an employee of, or is he using the vehicle of someone else?
I believe your, your authority extends to the person who is actually doing the hawk and pedal. Somebody else could own it. For example, it could be a, you know, a hood ice cream truck, and it, and, but the licensee would be the, the person who's actually going to be selling the individual.
Thank you.
And that's, that's the person that we would want the, the police chief to, you know, to review in terms of background. So I'm not sure who this other person is, frankly. And they also have to be licensed by the state, and they have to show a state hawk and pedal license.
Thank you. I didn't ask for a motion on that either, did I? I don't think I'm hearing anybody, any motions to offer.
I'll make a motion to repeal, have his, Hazemeh for his hawk and pedal license.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Made seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the regular business before the board.
Other comments?
Chairman?
Yes.
George, looking for, from Conference Street, I'd like to make a follow-up comment to the comment that I made at the last meeting, if I could, if I could brief, though. I requested a written response to my March 25th service request about the non-conforming activity. I didn't get one, but I did since then speak with a building inspector, and he has informed me that the operator is going to move the operation. I had a good conversation with the building inspector, and I appreciated that. I don't know the timing of the specific activities, but I just wanted to notify the board that subsequent to last Monday's meeting on Tuesday, my neighbor, Felipe Salido, threatened my wife and son in high driveway with a pitchfork, and I didn't take too kindly to that. And as a result of that, it had repercussions on this service request because, somebody may remember, back in 2003, my neighbor had a lot of chickens that were getting killed by coyotes in my backyard, and the board of health, in my opinion, wasn't assisting me properly, and I initiated activity to sue the town. I hired an attorney, and I was in the process of suing the town. This last action has also raised the stakes to me that it's going to be in my interest to protect my family if, I'm taking the building inspector at his word, that he's spoken with the operator, and no written correspondence took place, but they're moving the operation out of town. There were some other extenuating issues going on, but I just wanted to notify you as the board of selectmen, which I perceive as the, you know, authority in town and possibly through the town manager, that, again, I'm taking the building inspector at his word, but my neighbor has, has a great history of non-compliance with orders and directives. I have 25 years of documented history with the animals where they were directed in order to do various things, and within a year or two or a couple of months, or sometimes weeks, they reverted back to their old habits. So this has been 25 years of ongoing activity for me. So my final comment is, is just to kind of put the town on notice that if the activities fall through in past behaviors where it repeats again, I will initiate action against the town with an attorney. So I just want, you know, if it's appropriate at some point to, it comes up, I just wanted that it to be out there. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I would, and this probably goes without saying, but I feel more comfortable saying it, obviously, if there's a situation where you are concerned about the safety of your family yourself, don't make us the first call.
We did call the police, and there are things going on, and it's not really part of what's here, but based on the 25 years of documented history and other activities that are going on with having the adjacent property purchased, and my just general experience with my neighbor not following directives and having things reverted back to and non-compliance, and in my, you know, everyone has a different perspective, but I've perceived over the last 25 years that the town didn't follow up. As an example, there was a 2007 letter written to the neighbor to halt the activity, and in response to that, I got a letter from my neighbor stating they were going to sue me. You know, that's the kind of thing I've been dealing with for 25 years. So I'm just letting the town know that having raised the level of stakes, that the man doesn't even, you know, come bother me like he always has done in the past, but he threatens my wife and son, that's just totally unacceptable to me. And if he had just yelled at me like he's done in the past, there would have been no call of police, but I wasn't even in the yard, and the man comes out and he starts screaming at my wife and kid with a pitchfork, and that, that's, that's above and beyond. And anything else happens, if the town doesn't act in a timely manner, and what I believe to be correctly, I will, again, hire an attorney and foresee that actions as maybe appropriate to defend and protect my family.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business, committee reports.
I'll just make a quick comment. I won't be biased like Mr. Shampoo, but I would say I'd like to congratulate you, Mr. Newhouse, and you, Mr. Chmigali, on your reelection to the board. I know we may not have agreed on everything for the most part, but the bottom line is, I think at the end of the day, we take care of the town's business. We've done a good job, and, you know, we work collectively together with good mutual respect for each other, and I think we've done a good job. And once again, congratulations to both of you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, I would just like to thank everybody that came out and voted, put their trust in me and Mike, obviously, for electing us to the position that we're in again, and thank you all for, for going out and voting.
I'd just like to echo those sentiments. Thank you to the residents who took time to vote, particularly any resident who cast one of their two votes for me. I certainly appreciate it, and I will try and live up to the confidence that you've placed in me. Anything here?
I'd like to echo, as Mr. McCoy said, that congratulations to both you and Lou on your, on your victory, and I think the community service that you've done through the years on the board and off the board, I think has been a very large asset to the town, and... And I think the town should be very proud of the vote it is and actually showing it by the reelection of your results. So again, I'd like to congratulate yous on that.
Thank you.
And as, you know, as I continue on now, I just, back on the business aspect, I noticed on the town council's opinions back on the, that senior citizens' tax exemption. Is it possible to, you know, say what the result is? You know, I have no problem with it.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, from my perspective, I'm left with a question on one of the comments that was made and still plan on following that up, but thought that nonetheless, it should be, you know, included in the information that was provided to the board. And I think that, I would say that the bottom line is, there's nothing on its face in Attorney Foskett's opinion that's unconstitutional, and that on its face, it's legal. I still have some questions about that, but I think that's his bottom line.
Can I, I don't want to put anybody in a spot, but, and I hate to be, you know, an old drum just beating it, but, you know, where it's been brought up in the last, you know, couple of weeks, and, you know, I just, you know, I don't know if you want to do it, I take it at a later time, Mike. As far as, you know, I would like to know, you know, personally, you know, what leadway that the board would like to take with this. I mean, is it something that, as a board, you would want to work on this for the upcoming, you know, the following town meeting, year 2011? Or, you know, is it something you just want to put to rest? I don't need an answer tonight, but it's just something I've been working on, and I hate to keep using my energy in finding out, you know, that really it's not in the heart of everybody. So that's all, you know, where it came forward again, I'd just like to ask that question.
Yeah, certainly, everybody's welcome to express their opinion. My opinion is that I'm not interested in pursuing it. I know enough about it that I'm, you know, I'm not interested in that measure, but I believe as though if you feel compelled to bring it forward, the appropriate time to bring it forward is in the fall in preparation for the formulation of the budget. And I don't want that to be mistaken as some support for it, but I think that if it's your inclination to bring it forward, that's the time you would do it.
Would you, as board members, give me any input as far as, I don't care if we do it openly or whatever, as far as, you know, do you, you know, would you like to see my numbers twiddle down, or would you like to see a new proposal? I've been working on, you know, quite a bit of other communities, other states, as far as looking into it. A lot of the other state agencies give me a lot of information where to go and look. And, or is this something that you feel comfortable with as far as, other than the numbers, that you'd like me to go forward with?
Yeah, again, and I want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak, but I'm, I'm, I can't imagine there's a scenario that I'm going to be supportive of it, no matter how you might tinker with it. But again, I think if you're inclined to do that, it needs to be done through a public process, and I think it probably ought to be done sometime in the fall before the budget starts to be formulated. That's, anybody else have any comments on that?
I think up until January is when you really get ready for the next town meeting, correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, the manager's delivering his budget message, the 1st of February, thereabouts. Does that, do I have the right time? So that process obviously starts with the department heads in the, in the fall. Is it November-ish, Mike? He give you a direction?
I give a directive to the department heads in November, and then we begin work on the budget. So if the board wants this to be considered, it would appreciate if they would give me some direction by that time.
Prior to that, yeah.
Prior to that.
May?
Please.
Yeah, I'd like to offer feedback. I don't have a strong desire to team up and spearhead this effort. What I will say is, I think you're getting, you're trying to see if it's worth your energy. You said the word. Do I want, why keep expending energy for something that we're never going to support? I think it's worth you expending your energy and doing the kind of homework that we've now engaged the town accountant and some other folks to do, to figure out a way, if this is something that you feel strongly about, clearly you do, then I would be very receptive to hearing and listening to any proposal you come to. But what you, what it was revealed about the, a proposal that you had in mind was that it was far-reaching and very, very expensive to the town, not one year, not two years, but for the rest of our existence in this town until it goes away. So, so I think what we need to do is, you would need to dramatically rein it in. And maybe instead of targeting a population by age, whatever, income or whatever, target a number that the town can live with. And then, once we have a target number, I'm just going to, you know, hypothetically throw out $200,000. Right? If the town's going to, and I'm just using a round number just to, for sake of discussion. Now, if we can agree somehow that $200,000 is available, now how do you disperse that among the population? Who qualifies? That's something I'd be receptive to listening to. But, you know, I think some more homework would have to be done all through the summer so that you would have something to present that would be reasonable in the fall. And it would have to be reasonable. It wouldn't, you couldn't come to us with a, you shouldn't say you couldn't come to us. You couldn't come to me and ask the town to support a $1.5 million give back every year because it would, it would just kill us. So that's just a thought that I have as, you know, live here as we talk about it.
It's funny how you said that. I've got many a calls, in fact, all positive.
Yeah.
Not people that I know, just being on the street, phone calls, and just people seeing this issue coming forward, and a lot of them have told me, "Don't give up on it. Keep going." People that I don't really know. And, but the follow-up, one person did present that to me, to go with a base offer, just like the senior work program, the 500 flat fee, go across the board with it. But I, again, I got to really, you know, I've been spending a lot of time, all different proposals, all different ways, and I have to look at that. But again, I don't want it to get to the point where it is going to cost, just as you said, millions of dollars. I'm looking, that's why I was looking at the format that I had, control of that spending. I'm going to look into that 40% number. That's why, you know, unfortunately, I'm going to have to take the names and the addresses of the 2950, and then I'm going to have to take the 40%, and I'm going to have to sort that through. I do have a way of doing it. I'm pretty positive it's 99.9 accuracy. I can come close to zeroing in on those exact people that would be qualified. So I'm working on that. That's why I wanted to bring this forward and ask, this is something, I'm glad you'll be on board if I can present my numbers.
Well, don't over characterize it.
Right, I won't, but I'm just saying if I can come to it.
I'm not voting in favor. I'm saying I'll listen.
Right.
Right? I'm not, you know, I'm not, I would never say, Ray, forget it. I'm not my area.
Oh, no, no. I mean, I'll be honest with the board. If it's something that the board doesn't want to be on board me with, I'll take it, you know, forward on my own as, on the floor. And I won't take it as a, you know, as a slotman, I'll take it as a private citizen.
I got to be honest with you, Ray, I'm challenged. I don't think there's anybody in this room right now that wouldn't love to be able to give back to deserving seniors.
I agree.
Me included, most assuredly. But I'm challenged by that notion that that implies somehow that I don't want to give back to some other subset of the population. Everyone's deserving in some way.
I agree.
You know, there's lots of very deserving communities out there, and not all of them are seniors. And so how do we single out a single population? It's a difficult task. It really is. And I think Mr. Newhouse eloquently said it at one point, "The town is doing a very good job," in my opinion, "of striking a balance and serving the great, the greatest population." And certainly, it's ideal to think of ways to support and serve one pocket of the population based on a need, but in so doing, you ipso facto end up doing disservice to another subset of the population. How do we strike the balance? I don't have answers for you, but those are the challenges that I have in my mind as we go forward.
I agree. But like I say, part of the, you know, information I got from back from state agencies showing me other towns that do have senior citizen exemptions in their towns. So again, you know, while, you know, I have to look at that also, that I don't want to take Wilmington and just say, "We're over here at a different point of all cities and towns."
Can I just say something to that, Ray? We do have senior tax abatements in town. And the 41(c)(1) abatement that we use is the more generous of the 41 programs. It increases their income levels, it increases their asset levels. So we do do that. I just want people to understand that we do have tax abatements for seniors in this town. As far as your proposal goes, I think it's untangable. There's no way I could back anything that you put in that proposal. I think it would be an open-end, just a ridiculous train wreck going down the track that people would work to get into, just to, for instance, and I don't think we should talk about this much longer tonight, we have an executive session, but if a 65-year-old gentleman in this town owned a house that was worth $300,000, and he had $159,000 in the bag, and he made $49,000 in income, you could cut his income tax bill in half. The formula that you used, would that apply to that?
Only under, like I said, that, you know, again, I'm not going to debate it, you know what I mean? I appreciate, you know, you know, your opinion on it. That's all I'm asking. I, you know, researched it, working on the towns, I showed you.
That'll stay though, Ray. You're talking Wyndham, what's the average tax bill in Wyndham, New Han, or Wyndham?
I had that that night.
What was the average tax bill in that town?
I had.
$10,000?
I had one, I didn't bring it with me tonight, but I did have that one.
I don't think you stated what the average tax bill in that town is.
$6,600.
Is the average tax bill?
Yeah, they were cut in by a half.
Well, if you wanted input, I couldn't agree with, I couldn't do with anything with that proposal that you put in.
Oh, no. I'm just, I mean, I will come up with something, for sure. And like I say, now that I understand, I'll take it on my own as a citizen.
I'm sure Mike will help you. If we're going around the table, I'm...
You know, I have no problem, Ray, you going for it. I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm not saying I'm for it. I really need to see what the finished product is. And I believe it's up to you to come up with a number. I don't think I should be able to come up with a number. And at that time, I'd make the best intelligent decision I can make on behalf of the community as a whole. So if you can understand that, you know...
I just want to bring it to a vote with the town, you know, vote, that's all. That's the system.
May I? Just, and again, not to prolong it, and nobody has solicited my advice, but I'll be happy to offer it unless you don't want me to. And that is that in reviewing the opinion of town council, which is an opinion for the board, it really says that a, from a, from a technical point of view, any home rule petition can be offered, that it's, that a home rule petition is legal if the legislature adopts it. It also suggests that it's not likely that the legislature would adopt it, and that this is some, this particular proposal that we're talking about is really contrary to what is done in Massachusetts and through the Department of Revenue. So I think there shouldn't be any confusion. There is a way to increase the tax exemptions, as Selectman Semaglia has just stated. The town does do this. This came before the board and before town meetings several years ago. The proposal that was offered respectfully, I say this to Selectman Lepore, is inconsistent with the statutes that we have available to do something similar to this now. And I do believe that it would make more sense if the board wants to go in this direction, and I'm not suggesting that they do, but if the board wanted to go in this direction, that they model any change after the law that we have right now. And understand that whatever that change is, we would not be reimbursed for it. So that if you wanted to lower the age from 70 to 65 and make those people who are five years younger than the current age eligible for an exemption, you should do that. I don't think we should ever try to add anything into the law that would speak to the value of a person's property. I think what you should do is simply look at the different criteria that's now available to you, that is increasing the earning amounts, those limitations, decreasing the age, those kinds of issues. That's, that's how this thing should be looked at, if we're, you know, if we're serious about trying to provide some measure of relief. But like has been said by Selectman Shampoo and Chairman Newhouse and others, there are ways now that are offered, and there are a whole lot of people out there who might end up suffering as a result of these kinds of changes. And I would suggest that young families trying to put kids through school and everything else are going to have just as difficult or, or if not more of a difficult time. And when you talk about ranges, like $159,000, I don't know who has $159,000 in the bank or is making $49,000, but I don't believe that's what the legislature intended for. They intended for this to address those people who are in need. Yeah. And I think we, we need to drastically change the direction that this is going in. Otherwise, you know, there would be people who could be 60 years old and who would, right now, be smart to move their property into the lower earner in the home. And so five years from now, that person is going to be eligible as the sole homeowner. Those things are handled by the state statute, so you cannot manipulate the law. This kind of proposal is just rife with manipulation. And I'm sorry if this prolongs this, but I just think we really need to look at this. And maybe instead of getting input from other states, other communities outside of Massachusetts, we look at Massachusetts and just look to the law. We already have the law in front of us. We already know what we can do under the 43(c)(1) exemptions that's already available to us.
Anything else?
No.
I think we didn't get to me. That was Ray's little bullet. Are we still on that subject? I'm sorry.
Mr. Shampoo, that was a positive jab that led it to the editor. That's all I'm saying. That was a positive jab, just to let you know.
That's fine. I'll take the positive. I was going to acknowledge and accept the fact that I do have a bias, and the bias is based on my sincere belief and feeling that the town of Wilmington is being well-served and is now, I'm happy to say, continuing to be well-served after the election day. So congratulations to you, gentlemen, and I'm excited about the coming year.
Thank you. Important dates.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and just would like to mention one thing before the important dates. And some of you may have noticed the island in front of the town common and the work that was done out there in conjunction with Earth Day and what's being referred to as Planet Day. And I just wanted to publicly thank Garrick Santo Landscape Company and Anita Gotchak, who is a resident of the town of Wilmington, for the volunteer work they did out there. It really looks very nice, and speaking to her over the weekend, she's indicated that her company, and particularly her as a resident of the town of Wilmington, will continue to offer services there. And this is done by so many different people. I did want to just mention that, certainly, people like Walter Callings and others who do so much of this work throughout the town on various areas really deserve our thanks. And I thought that this particular area looked very nice for the weekend. In terms of important dates, the curbside collection of yard waste is, again, going forward this week, from April 26th through April 30th. The brush drop-off will be at the Old Main Street on Wednesdays and Saturdays, April 28th, May 1st, May 5th, May 8th. The Wednesday times are 9:00 to 4:00, and the Saturday times, I'm sorry, the Wednesday times are 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and the Saturday times are 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Remind you again of the annual town meeting at the high school gymnasium, this Saturday, May 1st at 10:30. Also, on May 8th, we hold the annual household hazardous waste day, where you can bring products, waste products that you cannot normally throw away. There'll be information about that in the local newspapers, or you can go to the DPW website. That will be held May 8th, Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the West Intermedia School parking lot. The board's next meeting is May 10th, and that week, May 10th through May 14th, is our final week of curbside collection of yard waste for the spring season. There still will be dates for the brush drop-off to be made over at the Old Main Street site. And just to let folks know that they have until May 13th to think about whether they want to... want to enroll their child in a Tiny Tots or Kids Club program. Registration will be on that date from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the town hall. And the Good Guy Award Dinner this year is May 14th, Friday evening. And, Mr. Chairman, customarily at this time, we try to let folks know that we do have the annual report available for 2009. This report was made available to the residents initially at the election and is now available in my office, and we'll also have copies at the town meeting. You can see on the cover is the newly renovated gazebo at the Town Common, which was renovated to the generosity of the sons of Italy this past year. And this is a nice winter scene. And I've asked our good friends from WCTV, Dawn and Ron, to help us through if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, as we end this date by going again through the calendar. We have the calendar that's available. We have some wonderful photos, again, depicting the town of Wilmington that's in the calendar. This is the 11th year now that we've, we've done the calendar, and I think it's still a pretty nice reflection of the community. And anybody who's interested in these calendars, they're free of charge. They do have dates from May through April, consistent with the community's town of Wilmington year. So if you're, if you're interested, they're available here at town hall. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining, not to return to open session?
We'll move. Seconded.
Being seconded? Any further? All in favor? We'll take a roll call vote standing down this end?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it's unanimous.